Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners to order for December 10th. We will have the Pledge Allegiance led by Commissioner Brad Wright, followed with the invocation with Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
Most gracious heaven and father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guide us in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just in the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Now, do you want to sing Santa Claus? It's coming attention. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll start with approval of the agenda. Do we have motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Murray with motion. Commissioner Tinsley with the second. All in favor of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, item one is to recognize Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager of ASZ November 2024 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Victoria O'Neal, Transfer Station Attendant, will address. Welcome. Welcome, Victoria.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first time coming, so bear with me. But I recommended Jessica O'Connor to be the strongest link in the chain for November. And my reasoning was, since she's been here, I've been impressed by the things that she's done. She's not perfect, no one is, but I've been very impressed. And one thing that has tremendously impressed me is that she's made it her business to know each and every person's name. That has never happened. I've worked for the City of Griffin since 1997, and only one city manager knew my name. So that says to me about her that she's not the big I and we're the little u's. And also, what really truly impressed me in November was the genuine tears and the genuine words that she gave concerning the man who lost his life. And, you know, that she couldn't pretend. And I was extremely impressed. And I also said that, I don't know whose idea it was to shut down the city, but I know that without her approval or sanction or whatever, it wouldn't have happened. And I was truly impressed. This is my adopted city. I'm not from here. So, but I'm very impressed with my city and my city manager. So that was my main reasons for recommending her for this award. And I owe, as well, I'm very impressed, when there's activities, you see her face. You see her face, her body, she's there the entire time. And that's impressive. That's impressive. So, because we've never had that before. We've never had that. So, this means a lot to me because I am impressed. It takes a lot to impress me because I pay attention to everything. So, I think that she is truly deserving of this award.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. That's a wonderful testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Ms. O'Neal, if you could turn so they can grab a couple of quick pictures. You're going to be a celebrity in the Griffin Daily News. Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Moving, item two is a presentation of the Water Distribution Systems Excellence Gold Award in the Water Distribution Team by Michael Melton, Georgia's section of Georgia Water Works Association, Director of Water and Wastewater, Brandon Lewis, will address. Welcome, Brandon.
Hey, good evening. So, we were privileged to earn the Water Distribution System of Excellence Award, as you just stated. And we're also privileged to have our former water operations manager, Mike Melton, here to present it to us. He has moved on from us to other pastures, but he is an AWWA representative. So, I reached out and asked him to do this. I'm very glad he accepted the invitation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. And it's a little different being up here without having the city green though. But I do want to thank you for letting me come back and present this. I am Senior Trustee with the Georgia Association, or, excuse me, the Georgia Section of American Waterworks, and I'm also on the Georgia Association of Water Professionals Board. If you're not familiar with the GAWP, it's a non-for-profit association with current members of nearly 4,000 water and wastewater treatment plant operators, managers, municipal and industrial officers, engineers, manufacturers, and other concerned citizens within Georgia that are concerned with water resources. Our membership consists largely of professionals who implement state and federal water supplies, water production, water resources, laws, regulations, and other chief purposes. It is to educate and assist those that have interest in proper management and the protection of Georgia's water. GAWP is the state's premier professional association for water wastewater-related issues. It was founded in 1932 and started the first licensing program for water professionals in Georgia. For the last 90 years, GAWP has provided the bulk of certified professional training for water and wastewater operators. And GAWP is the nation's second-largest state-level association for water professionals. We're formerly affiliated with several other national professional organizations, including the American Waterworks Association, Water Environment Federation, American Water Resources Association, and the Georgia Waterwise Council. GAWP is a respected and welcomed authority on water-related issues and routinely turned to by the media, the public, and officials for accurate water-related information. Recently, during the 2024 GAWP Fall Conference, City of Griffin was presented with the GAWWA Gold Award for Distribution System Excellence for the second year in a row by earning a quantitative inspection score of over 95 percent. The purpose of this award is to annually recognize water distribution systems that have operated in an outstanding manner. Each nominated system receives a packet that includes distribution system water audit and evaluator's guide. The system manager reviews these in order to gather the appropriate information for the review during the system's audit. Prior to the Fall Conference, a group of distribution system committee members visit each eligible system and spend four to six hours inspecting every aspect of the distribution system. Every award applicant has the benefit of having their distribution management system evaluated by a team of experienced auditors comprised of utility staff, consulting engineers, utility contractors, and other water distribution professionals. The auditors evaluate hundreds of pages of documents, and many specific areas are surveyed. There are many opportunities to get nicked from these points that you need. But again, the city was exceptional in scoring above 95 percent. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals and Georgia Section AWWA Distribution System Committee sponsors the Distribution of System Excellence Award for utilities that want to participate and achieve silver or gold status based on their system's audited performance. Platinum status is achieved after five consecutive Gold Awards. This Water Systems Program focused on furthering the performance of distribution systems across Georgia to strive to support water utilities across Georgia to improve the performance, safety, reliability, and distribution systems throughout the collective knowledge of sharing. At this point, I'd like to ask Shane, I believe Andrew, and Brian are back here to come accept the award, as well as Brandon. City should be very proud of its staff for reaching this impressive level two years in a row. This important accomplishment speaks volumes of the exceptional commitment and level of service that Griffin provides. And it is my honor to do this, to present it to you guys, because I've worked with you guys daily. And this is a group of professionals, and I'm proud to have served with them.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. I want to mention there's one more team member on Water Distribution that weren't able to be here because they're fixing a link right now, right?
They got done about 5:20, and they were muddy from head to toe, and so we went.
It rained today.
Yeah, they went home.
Thank you all for your hard work. And Mr. Melton, thank you for being here again. How's retirement treating you well, I hope?
Wonderful. Mr. Lewis, thank you for providing roughly 12 million gallons a day to all of our wholesalers, our customers, and making it happen. Thank you.
Next is the Presentation of the 2024 Annual Report for Stormwater. Director of Stormwater Jeremy Kenway will address. I believe this may be your first time to come see us, Mr. Kenway. So, congratulations. And thank you for your leadership.
As for the Stormwater 2024 Annual Report, it was two stream cleanup events with over two tons of trash removal. Family Field Day with water activities, Arbor Day event honoring Dr. Brent Keller, Stormwater Pipe Camera Program that we're putting together, construction and maintaining of over seven miles of ditches. 5,900 storm drains were cleaned, 2,628 feet of pipe, and addressed over 72 work orders. Over 200 water quality samples were collected for you.
You've been busy.
Short and sweet.
Are there any questions of City Commission? Thank you for your service. Moving into Review Financial Reports for October 2024, Financial Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to review the October financial statements, which is one-third, 33 percent into the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
The general fund has recorded 8.3 million in operating revenue, which is 33 percent of the budgeted amount, and 12 and a half million in operating expenses, which is 31.8 percent of the budgeted amount. Our enterprise funds have recorded 42.4 million in operating revenue, which is 38.2 percent of the budgeted amount, and 29.4 million in operating expenses, which is 28 and a half percent of the budgeted amount. Water, wastewater has recorded 11.2 million in operating revenue, or 37.3 percent of their budget, and 5.7 million in operating expenses, or 21.2 percent of their budget. Electric has recorded 25.8 million in operating revenue, which is 39 and a half percent of the budgeted amount, and 19.2 million in operating expenses, which is 32.2 percent of the budgeted amount. Solid Waste has recorded 3.6 million in operating revenue, or 34.4 percent of their budget, and 2.9 million in operating expenses, or 27.3 percent of their budget. Year-to-date local option sales tax collected is $1,855,307, or 33.7 percent of the budgeted amount. And year-to-date T-Splosh collected is $1,529,140, or 41 percent of the budgeted amount.
Thank you. And any word on the audit, when they'll be doing the presentation on that?
We are in the very, very final phases of wrapping it up. We've got a few letters to do. It will be done by December 31st, and then we'll look at end of January, first of February.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the board members? Thank you for your floor. Moving to Citizens' Comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item, not listed on the agenda for a public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the Citizen Comment Policy, adopted on February 13, 2024, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side that'd like to come before the board? Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Can you please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Freda Horton. I resigned at 115 North 14th Street, Griffin, Georgia.
Welcome.
I'm a Griffinite. I relocated here four years ago, and they was out paving my street in October 23. Well, they started paving my street. They paved from Popular Street to Solomon Street. And of course, I started from two, three doors down from Solomon Street toward this pyramid. And I talked to the guys out there, who they were very nice and everything, but they told me who to go and talk to about this issue. And I've been working with someone at the Public Works for over a year now, trying to get these last six blocks of my street paved. There are some homeowners down through there. We pay taxes like everyone else. And we just want our community to look just as, my street to look as just as good as anyone else. If I'm doing my part, then I expect my tax money to do the rest. And I was promised that, or I was told email that it would be done this year. We 21 days out. I've been communicating with someone at Public's work for over a year, and we're 21 days out. I'm looking forward to my new year, and I want the City of Griffin to look forward to their new year, but someone needs to let me know when this goes to start.
So, our calendar year runs to June 30th, and so we're actually voting tonight to resurface North 14th Street from West Solomon Street to Experiment Street. So, our fiscal year goes through June 30th. So, it's on our agenda for tonight to vote on.
June 30th?
Our calendar year is from July 1 to June 30th. So, that's our fiscal year.
Okay.
But it's on the agenda tonight to be approved, to be added on the list of streets to be paved this year.
Okay, so we're going to make December the 31st.
You will know by June 30th. So, our calendar year is June 30th.
So, when did you say you would tell that?
I started on this a year ago, in December the 4th. But I was informed that it would be paved this year, because I reached back out in August, inquiring about when it would be paid. And I was informed that it would be paved this year, and that date were... So, that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. Now, they don't shut down the Public's Work Office. I can't get in there to talk to anybody, so we're emailing one another back and forth. And I was trying to locate that date. My time is up.
Yes, ma'am, but it's on our schedule to be approved tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on my left side that'd like to come before the board tonight? Any on my left side? Yes, ma'am. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Tina Marie Marston, Kentucky Avenue.
Welcome.
Good evening. Today, I have some outstanding concerns from this year. I do apologize for the delay in bringing them to the board, but I was in a car accident and recovering from other hospitalizations, so that's why I'm just now having a chance to bring this to you guys. So, these concerns pertain to the City of Griffin's Title II, Title II Americans with Disabilities Grievance Procedures. When I initially asked for a copy of those procedures in April of this year, I was told they were being updated by ADA Coordinator Stephanie Woods. My request would be delayed until June 12, 2024. On June 11 of 2024, this Board of Commissioners approved a resolution amending the city's procedures. That resolution stated that in May of 2015, the City of Griffin enacted policies and grievance procedures related to Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. However, Mrs. Woods has been unable to provide me with the Title II grievance procedure in place from 2015, or any grievance procedure that was in place at the time of my request in April of 2024. This is important because it would have been the procedure my complaints and concerns should have been reviewed under. However, based on my communication with Mrs. Woods, the City of Griffin did not have an established Title II grievance procedure under the ADA until I requested a copy of it this year. If this was an oversight by the city's ADA coordinator, I am still requesting a copy of the ADA Title II grievance procedure that was in place prior to the newly adopted procedure on June 11, 2024. I'd just like to add, I really hope this wasn't oversight because it appears the city failed to have a procedure in place, then misguided this board to sign a resolution stating it was amending something that never existed. Title II of the ADA was approved in 1990, became effective in 1992, and had updates in 2010. It would be very concerning if the City of Griffin did in fact fail to establish these procedures for its employees, its citizens, and its visitors until 2024. I look forward to receiving a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marston. Is there anybody else on my left side that'd like to come before the board? Moving to my right side. Is there anybody on my right side that'd like to come before the board? Thank you all for bringing your concerns tonight. Moving into Public Hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the commission. Tonight, we will receive comments regarding the adoption of the revised official character area map for the City of Griffin. Director of Planning and Development, Michelle Haines, will address. Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody that needed to sign, we do have a signup sheet available. Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Haines.
Good evening. So, the current character area map was adopted in February of '24 as part of the '24 City of Griffin Comprehensive Plant Update. When the map section was given to the GIS Department, it was determined at that time that updates needed to be made to fix some of the line drawing errors, as well as coding on some of the character areas. So, we've spent the last several months trying to correct those on our end to bring it before the board. This update to the map is minor, but it is needed to better define the boundaries of the character areas and to clean up the mapping layer associated with those different character areas.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? All right, this is a public hearing. Nobody has signed up, but just want to make sure there's no one that needs to speak on this issue. Thank you. Moving into Consent Agenda, we have items six through 14 on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the whole?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero for the consent agenda. Moving into the regular agenda, item 15 is Consider Adoption of the Revised Official Character Area Map for the City of Griffin. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 16 is Consider Resolution to amend the City of Griffin's fiscal year 2024-2025 operating capital budget in the amount of $2,371,168.59 for implementation of the compensation plant update.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCord with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. It's 5-2 with Commissioner Curtis and Commissioner Ward voting against. Item 17 is Consider Resolution Adopting the Updated Language Access Plan Required by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs in conjunction with the award of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funds. Director of Planning and Development, Michelle Haines, is here. Any questions are needed? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Go ahead.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wright with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 18 is Consider Contract with Piedmont Paving, Inc., lowest bidder in the amount of $3,645,763.70 for year three of paving T-Splosh Streets.
Sub moving.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor of the list in the paving contract, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. Seven zero. Item 19 is Consider Resolution for the Purchase of Right-Aways and Construction Easements of Three Parcels for the Expansion of L's Way to Blanton Avenue at North Third Street to Create a Second Entrance and Exit into the Subdivision in the Amount of $15,000.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 20 is Consider Contract with Rusty Stateum, Inc., lowest bidder in the amount of $2,444,46.90 for the Remodel of the One Griffin Center. Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 21 is Consider Ratifying Agreement Between Georgia Interlock Risk Management Agency Girma and the City of Griffin to Provide First Responders PTSD Coverage as Required by Law.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 22 is Consider the Griffin Spalding County Hospital Authority Grant Allocation for the Year 2025, requiring city and county approval.
Sub moving.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero on item 22. Moving into item 23, Consider Master Service Agreement with MCCILLC, lowest quote in the amount of $10,237.50 for online open records request management software.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 24 is Consider Cancellation of the Scheduled Workshop and Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 24, 2024, due to Christmas holiday.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Really?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. And we're going to pause for the executive session till we get through city manager report, city attorney, and commissioner report. City Manager.
Thank you to Mike for being here again to award our Water Distribution Systems staff with the Excellence Award for Gold. I'm excited that that's two years in a row, so hopefully three more, and we can be considered platinum, but they are certainly well-deserving of that. Also, wanted to let you all know that board appointments are now open until January 10th. They close at noon. Please make sure that if you're talking to people about wanting to serve on a board, that they know it's noon. Every year, we have somebody that comes in at 4:45, and it's closed in order to put the agenda out. So, noon on January 10th. We had... We had at our Griffin Spalding Area Transportation Committee, Commissioner Flowers Taylor brought up the little five-point intersection, Spalding Street, Cersei, all of that, Solomon, that we need to talk about again. If you'll remember from times past, we had a constructed drawing that we decided at the last minute we didn't want to do. Commissioner Flowers sort of led that discussion, but it needs to be brought back up and talked about again. Spalding Street is on the list for sidewalks and paving, so it's something that we need to talk about. We had planned on doing a T-Sploß update and a Sploß update at your goals workshop, so if you were comfortable doing it, then we can get all of that information back together. But I wanted to make sure you all are good with that or if you wanted it sooner.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I just wanted to know sooner or the goals workshop?
In terms of the street?
The five-point intersection.
I'd say at our goals workshop.
Goals workshop?
We can look at it in another transportation and reflect on the T-Sploß revenue and what we're going to move forward with.
Okay. And then lastly, we did receive today the official information for the SR-155 Transportation Alternatives Grant, which is our sidewalks on South Hill Street. There is a match for that. The local match total over the next five fiscal years, I think that's right, four fiscal years, is $800,000. The first commitment is $100,000 for engineering, which would be in next fiscal year. But they need something in confirmation from us in writing that we will be putting that in our budget. We do have funds for that from a couple of different places. I think next year's would be coming from T-Sploß. And then we have some other money as well because we've done some sidewalk connectivity. We budgeted a million dollars in T-Sploß. We only spent $50,000 to do the Carver Road sidewalk since we did that in-house. So we have the money to do that. And I wanted to make sure that you all are okay with me sending that and saying that that is our, that we will be able to make that match.
Absolutely.
What about North Hill Street?
On what section?
Between.
Traffic circle and McIntosh Road?
Not even the McIntosh Road to after the city limits.
Okay, we can look at that.
The county was supposed to be working on a joint project with us on that in terms of connecting from the traffic circle at McIntosh to the traffic circle back through there.
Yeah, the majority of right-of-way in that area, I think, is the counties. But I will get with Dr. Ledbetter. And if that's something that we need to look at jointly, we can certainly do that.
We, I think we looked at it with the county before. And the side of the sidewalk that we had previously thought we were going to pave with the Sploß that down at the roundabout, even though they're saying it's in the county's easement, it's still on city property behind my residences house. So what I would like to see is that we get permission from the county to pave that, to put sidewalks there. Because there is a school there. There are children coming from Riley's Height and from Spalding Height that have to cross over and walk over there.
Yes, ma'am, I will look at that.
So consensus is we're good to go on the sidewalk on Zebulon Road?
Yes.
Okay. And then just a reminder, of course, that the Second Saturday Marion Bright Hometown Holiday Illumination Parade is this Saturday, starting at 6:30, but there are some road closures that will start at 4:00. So all of those maps will go out in the next couple of days. Just make sure you pay close attention to that. It is a big time party down here and there's a lot of people. So just be prepared for all of those road closures. And Ms. Robinson has done a good job, as well as the department directors, in working on all of that. And the police department is ready and fire department with barricades, enclosures, and enough people that will make sure that everybody remains safe and has a great time. And that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who was responsible for putting the parade together?
We sort of do it jointly, but really it's a Main Street Second Saturday event.
Okay. And I don't know if this is rumor or what, but are people not, they don't have to register? They just show up and be in the parade?
No, they're supposed to register.
Okay.
Through the chamber office?
Is this a golf cart parade thing?
You can golf cart, you can walk, you have big floats. We have some just trucks. We have a lot of the city and county equipment. So it's a bunch of stuff we've got. Do you know how many participants, Heather?
We have ninety entries. There was an online registration that actually ended Saturday. We have ninety entries, but within the entry, there are multiple items within those entries. So we have about 130 items in the parade this year. Not counting the walkers that walk beside you about the meeting. It's a very, a very big parade.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Since this is your last regular scheduled meeting of the month, I just want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Commissioner Curtis?
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And to Ms. Hoseley, I'm sorry that it took so long for you to get your answer for your street. And hopefully it'll be done soon.
Commissioner Murray?
I concur with Mr. Whalen. And I want to say Merry Christmas to all of our board and staff and citizens. And may you and your families be well through this season. And also, congratulations, Jessica. I agree with what Ms. Vicki said about you. It's very impressive. I do not know how you found the words to... I know you were close with Mr. Eric Williams as friends and also with staff, but your words were very moving. And I appreciate what you said at the funeral. Thank you. No further.
Thank you. Mr. Tinsley?
Merry Christmas, everyone. Staff, you sure make us look good.
Mr. McCord?
I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And I want to give kudos to the staff who all helped put together the home-going service for Mr. Eric Williams. He was a dear friend of mine. And I was at the ECG conference, but they wouldn't let me stay. I had to come back to this meeting. But they did a moment of silence for Eric. All of the cities that participated were so... Talked about how well it was put together. And I just want the city of Griffin to know, staff who all, whoever was involved in it, it was first-class operation. And his family was very pleased with it. And it's just, as Lieutenant Tinsley said, made the rest of us look good. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Mr. Wright?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same, I don't think I'll see anybody before the New Year. So happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. So I've got a celebration today. We had the Chambers, I think, 50th ribbon cutting this year. But one of the lady that we did the ribbon cutting for was Academy of Hope. So back either March or February, we did a special use issue for 703 South Knight Street for a childcare learning center for first through fifth, five-year, or zero to five. And so Ms. Brenita, Army veteran, we did a ribbon cut today. So I was, that was one of those head-scratch ones that we did, I think. But if you get a chance, go by there. They have done an amazing job. The interior decorating and everything. So we have a new pre-K program there below the hospital. So it's exciting to be there today and see the results of our vote there. Also want to give a shout out those of you in the audience that were in our city choir this past Friday night at the downtown tree lighting. If you could please raise your hand. I think we've got a few folks out there. So thank you for your joy and cheer. It was great to hear you all participating with the, I believe, Spalding High and Griffin High choirs joined you as well. So you all did a wonderful job.
And also did a good job with the tree lighting.
And then the mistletoe market was... And then mistletoe market, again, city staff did a wonderful job. We had vendors and food trucks and snow blowing around on Sunday afternoon. So thank you, staff, for your hard work on that. So want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. At this time, if there's no other business to address, item twenty-four, consider executive session pursuant to...
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry, twenty-five, consider executive session pursuant to OCGA Section 5014-3B2 for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee in pursuit to OCGA Section 5014-21 for the purpose of consulting a meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative procedures, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought or by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please raise your hand and join us in the rear. Thank you. All right, folks, stay alert, stay alive.
I guess, yeah. I don't, I don't know. If you need, when is it? Oh, I don't know.
Saturday.
What time?
6:30. Y'all didn't make it last year. She's excited about it. She got y'all matching coats.
We need him?
No, I was just making sure you were on the same page.